We're now live on Facebook.
I see, I see. I'm gonna share it and then we will get started. Alright, we are posted. Hello, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, December 15th of 2020, our last meeting of the year. And this is a special called meeting. It was advertised as such. And just like we have almost every other meeting this year, we do have to consider holding it virtually. First, I will read what the special called meeting is for the purpose of. It is for the consideration of three items, including second reading on ordinance 0201254, which is appropriating funds for employee benefits. Resolution R2012-65, resolution in support of the SIA grant for the improvement of three intersections for access to the City of Gallatin Industrial Park. Resolution R2012-66, a resolution appointing potentially someone as superintendent of public works and establishing the initial salary. Actually, it's four things. And the final thing was actually something I was supposed to bring up under other business last week, and I failed to do so. And it's an application to close the street for First United Methodist Church, pray Christmas Eve, outdoor service. And so those are the four things that we're going to be considering this evening. First, I have to read the electronic meeting disclosure for you to consider. It says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16, number 34, number 51, number 60, and number 65, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The December 15th, 2020 special call of Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You may join the Zoom meeting if you wish to participate in the meeting at the link you see there on the screen. You can also find that link on Facebook and on our website at gallatinTN.gov, or by dialing 470-250-9358, or 470-381-2552. The webinar ID is 849-4972-9538. We are streaming live on Facebook and also on cable channel 19, as well as our website. If you would like to view it there as well. But again, a reminder that if you wish to participate, i.e. comment, you must do so through the Zoom meeting platform. So with that, I will consider, or we will entertain a motion from the council?
Motion approved.
Okay, I have motion to approve by Councilman Alexander, or second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Alright, I will ask Ms. Kitchell to actually do double duty here. Call the roll and take a vote on this motion. So Ms. Kitchell, if you would do that, please. And councilpeople, you may just say that you are here and iron A on the motion.
Vice Mayor Camp.
I am present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present, yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes, present.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes, here.
Councilman Hayes. I couldn't hear you, Craig.
Yes, present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Love?
Yes, here.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes, present.
Mayor, we have a quorum, and then the vote is seven to zero.
Well, thank you very much. And so now we've already called the order, and we will move along now to public recognition. We called the roll, and we've called the meeting to order. So we'll move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the only public comment that we will have at this meeting because it is a special called meeting. There will be none at the end of the meeting. And so any comments this evening must be on one of the four agenda items. If you are calling in, you will press star nine to raise your hand and indicate that you wish to speak. If you are on the Zoom platform via computer, there is a raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. I'm gonna turn the phone, turn the meeting over to Jeff Henshaw, who will give further instructions on how to unmute once you are recognized and take any people, any comments from anyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Henshaw?
Thank you, ma'am. I, the only caller we see here happens to be David Brown. I recognize that number. But if we do have someone who calls or is trying to call now, you would do star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute your phone. And I'm looking over our panelists as well.
There are messages on Facebook saying that they're having a problem joining the Zoom meeting. So anybody having a problem, if you could call in? Let me go back and repeat then the call-in numbers, and we'll give it a few minutes since that's an issue for some reason. And the call-in number is 470-250-9358. And Jeff, you might put that back up on the screen so anyone that may be watching it can see that number because then they'll have to enter the webinar ID. Yeah, I think there you can see the numbers to call in. There are two options. It's that 470-250-9358, or 470-381-2552. And then the webinar ID is 849-4972-9538.
They're also commenting that there's no sound on channel 19. They're also commenting that there's no sound on channel 19.
I'll check that.
Lori, is that link accurate that's posted on?
I'm checking, just a second, I think. One second, please.
Check the equipment associated with channel 19. I don't see any issues there, so I'm not sure why we're not getting sound there.
No, the meeting ID is different. It is 876-5251-7542.
Okay, I'm gonna repeat that. The, so does that work for both the link and the call-in, Lori?
I am trying the, the link to join a meeting. Hold on one second. And Rosemary is saying the telephone number is not working either.
At one point, we did have two Zoom meetings for this special called meeting. Unfortunately, I think we have the wrong one there.
Okay, I have just success called in. I called in that first number and entered the number 876-5251-7542. And I see where someone else tried to too and was able to join. So anyone that wishes to join should be able to, by calling in that 470-250-9358 number and entering 876-5251-7542.
If you hold one second, I'll give you the phone number.
Yeah, it looks like you've got some people coming on now.
I'm gonna go ahead, and Michelle Pascal will go ahead.
Mayor, would you like the phone number to repeat?
I've been repeating it a couple of times, 470-250-9358.
Yes, ma'am.
And the webinar ID will be 876-5251-7542. And you'll press pound, and they ask you to enter your attendee ID, or just push pound, and you just push pound. Okay, since you have someone with their hand raised, Ms. Henshaw, do you just want to go ahead and let them comment? And we'll see if anyone else joins in.
Yes, ma'am. As I said, Michelle and Pascal, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. It's Michelle Juventz, 1335 Long Hallup Pike. I wanted to make a comment on agenda item number one. And I wanted to talk about, I would like to have our firefighters to get a bonus. I wanted to ask all of you if recently, if any of you have gone to the fire halls to speak to any of our firefighters lately, and if you've asked them about how their quality of life is, and if they're making enough money, and if you've asked them if the pandemic is negatively affecting their pay. Our Gallatin firefighters are underpaid, and they rely on overtime hours to make up for that. And because of the pandemic, I'm told that they're losing out on their overtime hours and that it's negatively affecting them. And last week, when you all were talking about the receiving the $600,000 in reimbursement funds from the state, and that our first responder salaries was what was submitted for us to get that money. And I'd like to see some of those funds, those reimbursement funds be used to give our firefighters a hazard pay bonus at this time. And so if you could talk about that when you discuss item number one. Also, just going forward in the future, in the near future, if we could consider giving all of our firefighters a pay raise so that their pay is more in line with what other departments in our area are getting. I think that we need to be sure that we're taking care of our firefighters so they don't keep leaving for higher-paying departments in the area, which is something that happens quite a lot, just from my talking to some of the firefighters. So that was what I wanted to talk about tonight. Thank you, and I hope you all have a very merry Christmas.
Okay, we do have an additional caller with phone number ending in 536. If you'd like to speak, please hit star nine. I've updated the link information on our website and our Facebook page.
Okay, do you think that, council, do you feel like we've given people enough time to join the meeting? I did put the, the phone number and the webinar ID in the comments on the Facebook thread. So it is there, and we have had a few people join successfully. So I know that it's working for others as well. Do you feel comfortable closing public comment and moving on? You all have to vote. Just nod and let me know if you think we have, or shake your head, no.
Yes, let's move on.
Okay. With that, I'm going to declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed and move now to the regular agenda. And we will begin with item number one, which is second reading on ordinance 02012-54. And for that, Councilman Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance appropriated funds for employee benefits. Now so moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, we are going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I's, zero N's.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. Second reading on ordinance 02012-54 is approved unanimously. Item number two is resolution R2012-65, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this are, let's see here, hold on one second. Yeah, this a resolution, this a resolution in support of SIA grant for the improvement of three intersections for access to the City of Gallatin Industrial Park. Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second. I believe that was Councilman Fann.
Yeah.
Second by Councilman Fann. I'm in the floor for any discussion. No one wish? Ms. Kitchell, it froze for a second there on me. Were you taking the vote?
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yeah.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven I's, zero N's.
Thank you. This is resolution R2012-65, and it passed unanimously. Item number three is resolution R2012-66, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is a resolution, R2012-66. I'm gonna read the resolution. So the City of Gallatin Charter, Article Section 2. I hereby, David Kellogg is hereby appointed to the position of superintendent of public works for the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, effective on or about January 15th, whenever Mr. Gregory retires. The initial salary appropriated for superintendent public works shall be, my understanding from Miss Flood, step nine, which is $113,477. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second, yeah.
If I could interject for just a moment, it says superintendent of public utilities.
Yes.
And of public works.
Sorry, public utilities.
So we have a motion by Councilman Overton. We have a second by Councilman Alexander. It opens the floor for discussion. I do want to address one thing because I've had a few council members ask me about it. And I'm actually not going to address some. I'll ask Ms. Haumacalli to do it because there was some concern about something that had happened several years ago related to this candidate. And I think it was about four years ago, and Ms. Haumacalli was actually the one who conducted the investigation. I knew some of you weren't here at the time. It was something that was handled internally. And I just wanted to give her an opportunity to kind of go back and explain to you all what the situation was so that you have a level of comfort knowing how that played out. And then I'd also like to give Mr. Gregory an opportunity to say anything if he would like to. And Mr. Kellogg was supposed to be joining us, but he may not have been able to, or he may be one of the callers. And I will ask if he, if he is trying to reach us to either let me know, either via text, or the, I don't know if attendees can actually comment on our format of meeting, but to let me know if he is trying to join. But, but Ms. Haumacalli, if you would go ahead and just kind of revisit that situation and talk about it for us.
Yes. So back in February, early February of 2016, the mayor and council received an anonymous letter from someone stating that, quote, porno had been shown during a training at GPU, the HR director at the time. And I did an investigation. We interviewed eight people, including the trainer. And the trainer readily admitted that he had shown some videos that had inappropriate language. And one video, and possibly he had shown some photographs to some employees of topless women. There were eight people that were interviewed that were at the, in the training. And there was more than one supervisor in the training. None of the supervisors recall seeing the videos. Mr. Kellogg stated during his interview that he was not present during that portion of the training. He said that he had stepped out of the meeting. He was not present. And there was a discussion about that evidently at GPU. And after the investigation, there was a report that was made. And Mr. Kellogg and others were given a written reprimand for basically lack of attention at the training. And also, our sexual harassment policy was reviewed, and measures were put in place to ensure that this did not occur again. And that is basically a summary of what occurred about five years ago because the meeting was actually in December of the previous year, December 8th and 10th of 2015.
So do any council members have any questions about that from Ms. Haumacalli?
Oh, I just appreciate the clarification. I know someone spread it all over Facebook today that made him believe that Mr. Kellogg was, you know, done something inappropriate himself. And that's not the case. He wasn't even at the meeting, so.
Yeah, what I can say to that, no one could identify whether or not Kellogg was in the meeting during the time, and he stated he was not.
Thank you.
But you did say he was reprimanded for that?
Yes, a written, he was, a written reprimand was given to him by Mr. Gregory following the report that the HR director and I made following our investigation.
So that they would take efforts to better oversee the training materials for future trainers. You know, I view it as the responsibility ultimately was with the trainer and the company that provided the trainer. Who, it is beyond my, when I, when I got that letter, I couldn't believe that any professional trainer would do something so ridiculous. And then to actually do an investigation, find out that, yes, they did. It was, it was quite crazy. So needless to say, we did not pay that company, nor have we used them again, so.
Yes, I will say that that, that trainer has been blocked from coming in, and there were measures put in place. Now the supervisors are required to review all training materials prior to any training. And they also give out our harassment policy when we have a third-party contract that comes in to do any training. And we had any other instances of that, to my knowledge.
And so anyone coming in to train is advised that they can't show anything inappropriate, which again, who would think that we would have to do that in this day and time? But we are doing that so that we can prevent that from happening in the future. So really, are there any questions related to that?
Sounds like Mr. Kellogg was not at fault.
That's what I think.
Now, again, I really feel like the trainer was at fault. But in a situation like that, we do have a responsibility to figure out a way to keep it from happening in the future.
I'm gonna give you the material first.
Okay, so I hope that we have put that to rest. I do want to ask Mr. Gregory if there's anything that he would like to say relevant to who may be his potential successor. And you don't have to.
I've told you all along, I'm 100% for Mr. Kellogg. That's all.
It's alright. And Mr. Kellogg, I still do not have an indication.
He's here.
Oh, he's here with you?
He's here.
Perfect, perfect. Since he's been trying to get on the meeting by Zoom by phone, but he's there with you, so we're in good shape. See popping into your seat. There he is. Alright, so Council, Mr. Kellogg is actually in Mr. Gregory's seat for the purpose of you guys asking him any questions that you may like to ask him or any discussion that you may like to have at this point. So floor is open. Indicate if you would like to be recognized and speak. Mr. Kellogg, is there anything you would like to say?
I would just like to thank you and the council for the opportunity to be considered for the position. Just know that I'm committed to working with you and the council to continue the growth of the department, continue to serve our customers, and to work on the morale of our employees.
And how many years did you say you had, you know, with public utilities?
Thirty years.
All that with Gallatin?
Well, 31 in utilities, 30 of them here in Gallatin.
And again, I may say, Mr. Kellogg, and I had mentioned it to you before during an interview, how appreciative I was of you wearing the mask because of this COVID-19. So again, I thank you for professionalism, and I, I just pray and hope that you continue to do a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I think most citizens realize how fortunate the City of Gallatin is to have such a robust utility system. It's been so well planned so that we have such great capacity, excess capacity. And I think that is due to the planning by Mr. Gregory and by Mr. Kellogg. And we probably have one of the best utilities in the state. It's unique that we have water, sewer, and gas, and ample capacity with all. And we get a lot of compliments on our system and the way that it operates. And, and I do feel that Mr. Kellogg is poised to continue that trajectory. I'm looking forward to the future and working with him ever the leader there may be because I do believe that there are even better opportunities to make the utility even better. But we'll be celebrating Mr. Gregory in the weeks ahead, and, and he is due lots and lots of praise. And I know he will get it from us and from the community. We may not get to have our celebration as timely as we would like. We will certainly celebrate him. So, council, questions, comments?
I was thinking we should give him a shot.
So council, do you feel ready to vote on this? May I ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Kitchell.
Vice Mayor Camp. I don't see him. Councilman Alexander.
100% yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
I'm staying.
Pardon me?
I'm staying.
You pray.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Did y'all hear David Gregory's comment?
Now, Ms. Kitchell, I actually voted on this as well, I believe, right, Ms. Haumacali? Because it's the hiring of a department head.
That's correct. For sent to the, the mayor also votes on.
And Mayor Brown.
I vote yes.
I have six eyes, one no vote or not a one abstention. And Mr. Camp didn't vote, so.
Not a no vote, but it did not vote. Thank you.
Right.
Okay, well, with that, Mr. Kellogg, I do believe congratulations are in order. And we'll look forward to working with you and, and generating the opportunities that are ahead for us.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you, council. Okay, so resolution R two oh one two dash sixty-six appointed Mr. David Kellogg and the salary that was named, which was one fourteen, three, one thirteen four seventy-seven. Is that right, Councilman Overton?
Look to be sure. One thirteen four seventy-seven.
Okay, and it passed with a vote of six zero one abstention. Was, yeah, six zero one abstention. Thank you all. We'll move now to item number four, which is the application to close the street. That's mine. And like I said, this was something I was supposed to do under other business last week and I failed to, but had the opportunity to add it to this special called meeting. So this is an application to close West Main Street from North Water to South Foster and it is for one hour, which is eleven PM to twelve AM. It's the First Nine Methodist Church's annual Christmas Eve service that happens. They caught their midnight service and they're going to be doing it outside this year for the public and for COVID safety, I'm certain, so. It does have the appropriate signatures, both from the businesses and from the department heads and I would entertain a motion from this.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Thank you. Six eyes and say ronays.
Okay, so the application to close the street is approved unanimously. And that concludes our agenda. And with that, our meeting is concluded because we have no other items of business. I do want to mention Councilman Alexander, our happy birthday here in a couple of days on the eighteenth. And I certainly wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
I have chicken, John D.
Take my wife out. I got married on my birthday. I made.
John, say, say the Christmas carol that you sang the other day to cast us away.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am.
Merry Christmas all.
Merry Christmas.